Okay, I think my act is somewhat together. Um, it's, uh, we're running a little late, it's six, seven, seven. We might as well start this meeting for the ARB if we could have a roll call, please.
Tom, here, stay.
Here.
Here.
Laura said.
Here.
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 Okay. To start off the meeting, uh, we have an agenda item for citizens' time. Uh, anybody that is not here to, uh, give comment on their own certificate of appropriateness or citizens that have, uh, concerns can speak now, if there are anybody out there. You guys here for the certificates? Okay, um, I guess we'll move on then to a minute approval.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from, is that really right, November eighteenth?
January twentieth.
January twentieth.
Okay. Uh, I make a motion to approve the minutes from January twentieth, twenty sixteen.
I second. Okay, got a motion and a second. Um, anybody have any corrections they want to add to this before we approve this? Hey, John, and, uh, do you guys get? Okay. Might as well, uh, I guess, uh, vote on this. Uh, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looks like we can approve the minutes and submit them. Okay, um, I guess before we go on, do we, uh, have, do we, um, have to adjust the, uh, the agenda to add this certificate of appropriateness?
Just please.
Anybody want me to make a vote on that? From agenda changing? Okay. I'll make the, uh, motion to, uh, add this COA to the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, anybody, um, have any negative comments to say about it? Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We add this as, uh, one of our agenda items in. Okay. We'll move on to the certificate of appropriateness. We've got, um, three standing here.
As we're releasing the, um, the final effect about the historical value of the house.
It, it doesn't mean.
Yeah.
What I don't necessarily sure that there's additions that. Just tell them what's in the market. The houses that have been used over time. Not going to be a natural location, probably not. But I think the idea was to try. With the post office. Just to try, uh, to be certain. So. If there were tracks to listen on the magistrate, it would be a problem. Kind of.
Currently, I said, currently those are light lights and then each.
Here's each window has two panes. It's like, uh, um, realtor. In the parking lot, there's just a long right down the middle on the upper, lower part. So they're really large panes.
You started one, show the.
Yeah.
And we plan, we were planning on doing some stuff. Same.
That's what I'm going to do. Two, two panes over there. Sessions.
Now that is, um, are the final windows going to have that same?
Yes.
Or are they going to be a false use that's.
Internal.
Internally, yeah.
Oh, what's the saying?
Right.
You can't tell them.
They would make this more large, it's glass and you put a little bit of wood on the inside.
Of the window.
My understanding is that they're on the inside of the window. The bottom is on the inside of the window.
Sometimes they exactly have, you know, the main window to, you have to be inside.
Right. All right, I know exactly what you're talking about.
What are these windows?
I, I think that I was left with, um, five windows. They left me with the option of we can either have it just inside the glass or we have both, like you're saying. I don't think that nothing over. He said how many millions inside outside does it include? Doesn't affect the price.
Your question is, it would be more true to care if it was outside the.
Correct.
Right.
Even those are, they're like a snap and print.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ones that are in there, they're also, they have something, you know. And then they have those that have look, they're more less sort of flipped in, but they give the look of, but still it's true, light and light.
Right.
Do you have any other have the weight of the glass?
I want to really go.
Making other presentations.
What?
That would be the recommendation that you had.
It would be nice if. You can just leave this on the outside, you know, and the inside and again, possibly that we have something metal and tweed material, that'd be fine as well. But yeah, I guess what I'm trying to do is just, you know, from a Z one, large, you know, pane of glass, put a little clip on, he's inside.
You want it on the outside.
Correct.
Yeah, we want the million recommendations from on the outside, not on the inside.
For both.
Both is better, they can, uh, secure the glass a little bit better, especially since it looks like they're going a little organic, you know, and all that stuff. So there will be a prioritized barrier between.
And then the door, I don't know if you had any comments on the door.
The actual door isn't wood, is it?
Yeah, they're all wood. Yeah. I don't think it's.
There's that's the afternoon sun. Probably the front door or the morning sun, wanting to get the real hot.
And there's, uh, I included a picture. Apparently they didn't have the new catalog for the doors, only have the old, so I didn't have as much information, but I circled the, um.
Yes.
What it would look like.
I mean.
Still, but I, I can show you, feel like.
Might help.
It's a nine light.
Well, that's, once and that's up to us, you know, how many dividers there are.
I was trying to determine, was the door original to the house or was it a later?
No, it wasn't.
Wasn't.
Because originally there were the side lights and the, well, like above and the doors. And then when they put the new door in, whenever the new door went in, they, they put wood, they filled the side lights with wood.
I was actually hoping to help.
Would like to open it up and the side of the back.
That's nice. So I'm not wanting to do that. I guess I think maybe that's why.
Lights in the transit.
Yeah. Can I take this?
I don't know.
No.
That's true. So this one right here. This is the door you want to replace. So just Jerry's page one eight.
Cause that's close to where it's.
Does it have? So that's the style they're looking at, side lights.
I actually want to keep this after. Okay.
So any reason when you put the glass?
It was just the option that he suggested because that's how it goes down. They think it would all.
I'm trying to, I think, what would be, John, you know, what would be the period?
Door for that.
It's, um, nineteen ten. I think it doesn't match the, yeah, stockpile of the house.
See, I wouldn't do for last for safety, that would be maybe.
It'd be. It'd be safe.
And for people wearing it in my house.
There's ones you can get now where they have it.
The shutters. You light to the side.
They allow that to that time period, I mean, the oval, I mean, this is for orientated, right, so you had the oval glass, you had in class, you have sometimes inserts in the, that's, um, the nine light. Got the nine light nowadays, we often put them on.
I think I'm.
It can, it can be a solid door too. I mean, the protector told me it can be just like a combination. It could be full, it could be a full door, half light. I mean, just about anything.
Nineteen ten doors images.
Had a nine light over, so is that correct?
No, I just looked up nineteen ten doors first. It was like the first picture. Probably look at the address, then it might come up.
That's a good.
His, I would, his, he said we could do any option here, but his recommendation was to have a full door with the glass on the sides. Have a security door. Get the seat out if there's someone.
I think that'd be fine. Either way, I mean, you know, that I like to incorporate, just to show us that. I see.
Adding the sidelines back will be.
Yeah. Taking it back to the traditional.
You said there's a transom. The transom is still there. Right now.
That's just a square transom.
Is it partitioned or? It has two partitions in it, I think, right now.
Are you, are you replacing that or that's going to stay?
It would be all muted.
Oh, nice.
Right, because the, the other one, I mean, the corner one, I have to assume is, as wide as the door, about three feet.
It's wider than the door, it covers where the.
So the window replacement, the door, the side lights and the transit. Do you have any conversation on color?
What color is now?
The front door used to be white.
Would you like, what color would you like it to be?
Um, we just thought white because it would match the windows and the doors on back of the house are white.
What color is the siding?
Yeah, is it the yellow?
It's a yellow.
Yeah, right.
Which isn't really there, so.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully the paint will be another project.
Metal, yeah.
It, it dripped bushes down the front, so it's opening up a bit. So I was chairman with the placement windows with the external.
Brids.
Molyneux grids.
Yeah.
Um, front door as requested.
So moved.
The only thing I would ask again is, many curves, you have some, I call it the wavy glass, but there's some windows that you can say just, I call it, it's like the glass.
Yeah. Roll glass.
Roll glass, if there's some opportunity to grab that, that's kind of a neat thing to be able to show.
Sure.
Okay, Denise?
The question, um, the door is, is it metal or wood?
Um, no, they're, I think they're metal, the doors are metal. That's interesting, because they're all metal.
Yeah, I think.
And that's part of the challenge for doors, it's so big, it's forty-two inches, it's warped being, you know, with the weather, hot and cold.
The sun.
It's hard to open and close. Even though it had a tremendous balance.
Okay, Marshall, do you want to fix my motion or you want me to? I make a motion to approve, um, zoning permit, ZP two zero one six, section zero zero seven, four six seven four zero, Faye Street, for replacement, the windows and doors. The windows being replaced with external bricks or molyneux. Accents and, um, the door as indicated in the application. Color white.
A white.
I second.
Okay, motion is second. Nice chance for any more discussion.
The only comment I would add was the, as far as, you know, seeing from the road, which is most of our concern, I think it would be fine. Saying, a metal door will change the, the feel of the house, the two of the house. A metal door for a reunion. It's not as.
It's all metal now, no. The siding's not.
Original.
Not the original.
So we see, getting back to the original style.
I don't know how long the siding's been there, but that's the next step is.
Is it aluminum? What's that, the seventies, right? Time they put a little bit of siding on houses.
Sixties and seventies.
Yeah.
And eighties.
Okay.
So, I have a question, the transom, should that have, um, accents too or? Cause I didn't really think about that.
Yeah, any molyneux, I think should be external.
Okay.
Good point on the door, I think these are going to be internal molyneux, do you want the the doors and the transoms and the side?
I think the doors come with that.
They do. They do.
Yeah.
They don't go well, they're internal, I mean, for appearance, it's, it's somebody right there, their face on it.
The transom, we want the transom to match the rest of the.
Yeah.
It's going to be painted with whichever.
Yes.
I'm just going to, just off the doors, my doors, metal, or is they come with the plastic insert, I mean, the whole the glass has a, a cut, a snap on.
It's exterior.
But it's exterior and interior, but outside by the glass.
Yeah, but you can take that off and paint it. Yeah, a lot of people don't paint them, but.
Are you discussing your, uh, trying to.
No.
Did you want to make a friendly statement to your?
Too much.
At the.
The door.
I thought he was just asking for clarification, I thought I said that, that what is, doors have external molyneux.
Okay. I have a motion, second. Discussions done, but I'll put it to vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ideas? Okay.
Do you comment on the shutters with church?
Yes.
Uh, we, at the next town council meeting, I was asked to do the opening prayer, so, um, I decided that'd be a good time, because we just hadn't gotten around to it yet, to present one of the shutters from the bell tower to the town.
From the museum.
So on April fourth, we'll be bringing one of the shutters here, they're not great shape, you'll get to see why we need to do what we need to do, but we'll be giving one to the town.
Great, awesome.
Thank you.
See that?
Closing that door, so that's the shutter.
I'm excited to see any windows. Shut it. I live like Harris Lee. Not getting them.
This policy, you know, you could probably sell it.
There's talk about that, we give a shed that we could sell that, because the, the other building's next, you know, probably come.
Yeah, the historical, I mean, there's websites, just what I, people. Have a good evening.
I'll take, thanks, sir.
The molyneux.
M U L L I O N. M U L L I O N, molyneux.
John, there's no molyneux.
Architecture.
You should have seen that.
Maybe type of text and see if.
John, how do you solve? You went, you went architecture school. No one's going to check it for spelling, I promise.
You never know. Fifty years from now, right?
That's right.
People couldn't spell.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to the, uh, the agenda items. COA for the.
There's shots of things on the, on a wee berry way.
So, I've, uh, pictured through the line, there's a series of entrances went up.
How did no one see it when it was happening? I didn't see it either.
Yeah, I didn't see.
But when you think.
I did it every night.
In the cloak of dark.
Um, so, right now, providers of things, so you have this sort of ornamental fence along the front of the food line, parking lot, and along the, um, front of McDonald's. The fence of McDonald's is a barrier to people from showing up. Potential walls on the outside. And, um, for whatever reason, one's painted green, one's painted black. So you see on top, I took these pictures this afternoon, like you see between the food line and the shopping center and. And, um, for whatever reason, one's painted green, one's painted black, so you see on top, I took these pictures this afternoon, like you see between the food line and the shopping center, and then on the right, there's a store picture you see is what's out there today. Several years ago, you approved the permit for a foot, four foot, black fence along the backside shopping center, separate shopping center from the sports place. Came through, approved that, no problem. Uh, and this is, this is what the applicant has done, is the, there's a landscape buffer between parking lot and the shopping center, their backside of McDonald's, if you do mind that in your head, I think there's a graphic there, so they. So they installed this four foot, same along the length of that small little landscape island, um, between shopping center and the, um, McDonald's. My assumption is that they're trying to disorient people from.
Parking there and walking across.
Parking over, walking over McDonald's.
Cause they like so.
Um, but same thing with the fence along the driveway, it separates the food line parking lot from McDonald's, and a certain aisle. Uh, they put a, uh, four foot fencing all along the, there. And then, as you can see, in the, in the picture, it's tied that fence into the fence on Washington Street.
So McDonald's owns that property up there, is that Donald's?
They have a lease line, they sell that, the, uh, the lot.
From Lee Berry.
Yeah. So, you want to take your complex and partition it, right?
Just doesn't make sense to me.
So I think, yeah, with fences, fences make neighbors, so they also direct pedestrians where they want to go. The one behind the McDonald's in front of the shopping center, it directs people to the drive out, so you don't have people walking through the landscape island, going to McDonald's, you have to go down to either end where the driveways are. It's a whole lot, it makes a lot of sense. On Washington Street, the issue is to create the huge barrier, not only for customers trying to pass the parking lot, but now you've, you've, you're trying to be able to get into the side. And they don't match, so we see on the second page is where the landscape island with fences is surrounded, and then the two fences are different sizes, which don't match. So you see right here, this whole part where four feet meets the third, you see that.
Now, Sean, are there any easements on there for utilities or anything?
Sure there are.
Well, aren't they blocking easements then, if they put a fence on?
I was probably telling you, this is in, but it's typically, that's at their risk, if they put it in there.
The water flag, like, right there at the corner? And then you've got.
These are where the recently, they've upgraded the poles there, so. So, what I was going to suggest, as I said, it's black, no fencing, that I was going to recommend is that they remove the fences around landscape islands, and simply have it ends here. Remove this fence along the corner, and then for that section of fencing, you see here where they don't match? Take this segment of fencing in the back.
And put it there.
And switch it with this length of new fencing in the front, basically do a swap. But the idea is, is that you would leave an opening right in this area of the fence line, so if you're walked across, you can get into the shopping center.
Okay, I have another question.
Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yes.
And then paint it all black.
And, yeah, and that includes the existing fence, because they've replaced more than eighty percent of it, right? So we can request that?
No, so all this is new fence.
Right, well.
So this fence right here.
Because they're adding all this new stuff, which is part of the other fence to be maintained, right?
Correct, so this is existing fence today, they didn't take anything down, they just added to it, but it doesn't.
Right.
Do they have to get these parking signs approved, or no?
If it's under a square foot, it doesn't, so yes, those signs, the, the time sign's too large.
Same.
And those are littered all over those.
Somebody doesn't like the carpool cars that were parked up there.
Well, I mean, part of this might be from the, when they had the, the activities over on, fuck your bank.
Uh huh.
And people were walking across, and maybe that was a.
But that's not happening anymore.
No.
Are they worried people are going to do it when Chick-fil-A starts?
I don't know. Not sure, but I, I haven't had a chance to catch up with Ms. Weldon, who manages it, she's the daughter of a family that owns at Lee Berry's. But I decided to go ahead and add it tonight, to at least get your feedback on what I was going to recommend she do, um, and then see if, if you wanted to defer a decision on this, have her make those changes, revise her application, and then come back in next morning.
I personally am tired of people asking for forgiveness.
Yeah, I was just about to say that.
They know what's wrong in the first place, that's just, just go put that out there.
I was going to say that, I mean, I know I'm still new, and I'm, I'm catching up, but it seems that since I've been here, there's been so many people in town that have just done things, and then come back later, and just expect for us to just, oh, don't do that, but. How can we keep the relationship between us and establishments positive, with them knowing that there has to be, their, their, their.
They have to uphold their part of them.
Yeah, they have to uphold, uphold their part to, to us, as much as they want us to uphold our part towards them, and that there are going to be, um. They're going, there's consequences to their actions, so where do we stand as a board, and allowing things to constantly keep happening without coming to us in, in the proper manner? I mean, there's still that sign, the signs up for Foster's Grill, and I don't know how that's supposed to be handled, and then I saw that there's another red sign that's up a little bit higher, like, I don't know if it's an advertisement, or.
Real estate sign.
It's a real estate sign, so now there are two signs up there, so who's going to put another sign up there?
So in the, in the normal course of events, if, let's, I would send them a violation notice. And they would say, well, how do I fix it? Well, you need to submit your specific appropriateness, and then if they come in, you have the choice to either approve it or deny it. And if you deny it, then that's an enforcement action, and then it.
They have to take it down.
Take it down, so that's where I'm thinking, to your point about trying to be accommodating, saying, okay, you did this, but you've, you've, you've created a situation that's not conducive to what the town's trying to create.
Yeah.
Yes, we understand you want to direct where pedestrians go, would totally isolate one building, three different types of fencing, two different colors, it just, it doesn't mesh well, so.
I mean, obviously, they knew, knew they needed to apply, they applied for the one in the back, right?
Different group, right, wouldn't that the signature group?
No, that was, uh, Mr. Lee Berry's grandson, um, Kenny Humphries, who owns advantage landscape, all the same family.
What I was about to say, does it even, does it still, does it matter still? Isn't it still the same?
So that's why I think what you do now is you.
Corporation, so to speak.
You have sixty days to approve it or review it, as if with your, if you agree with my recommendation, go back to her saying they reviewed it, but before they'll, they'll approve it.
You have to do these things.
Here's something that you need to do, and if she says no, you deny the application, then it goes into an enforcement action.
Plus, Kim.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Kim.
If they went through the appropriate, uh, um.
Channels, yeah.
Process, uh, we would at least be able to vet that they've done their due diligence to try and match the fences up. That's the only issue here, is that we don't know whether they've done their due diligence, so when we go, well, you can leave this portion of fence up, just make sure it's, uh, you know, separated by, like you were saying, take down the one piece around landscaping, if you want to make some type of fence barrier there, you can use hollies. Or something like that, then we can do our due diligence with, uh, well, we vetted that they tried to find, you know, right now, we have no clue if they've really tried to find this fence to match it up with, or anything. Uh, this is just a comment I'm making to the board here.
But, uh, but doesn't that still give them a little bit of a, oh, that way you shouldn't have eaten that cookie?
You still ate it.
Well, we can tell them, well, the thing is, uh, i- if they brought it and went through the true process and said, we've tried to find this fence, we can't, we need to get a fence you guys would be happy with, then you can negotiate.
And I can understand that, I can understand that.
That's, that's what I'm trying to tell. That's the thing that's missing, so do we, do we, uh, say start over, or do we say, okay, the fence is grin and bearable? It's, it's a, it's an appropriate fence for what they're looking for under our guidelines, but.
But, but they still didn't.
But it doesn't match up, so that's a no-go right there, what are we going to negotiate?
They put up a sign, and they, they put up a fence, and they still didn't come before the board, even to say, we can't find a fence to match this, but this is what we're proposing, this is what we'd like to do. They didn't even come and say, we'd like to try this, or we'd like to put this, you know, out there for you, you know, for you guys to even consider, they just went ahead and did what they wanted to do.
Right.
I want to drive thirty-five, down fifty-five, I can't, because I have to follow the rules, they didn't follow the rules.
Right.
I mean, it happens all the time, Marshawn, you know this.
And I feel bad, Marshawn, because it puts you in, it puts you kind of in, you know.
We do enforcement reactively, not proactively, so, and it's a small town.
Like, I don't want to make anybody mad, because I, I go to food line.
I guess I look at it this way, it's, it's time and opportunity, and I think sometimes people realize, the town, all that, we have limited resources, and to spend a lot of time and resources going after someone, is not, I think, in this case, they've spent, they're going to have to bear the cost. What would have been, I, let's look at it this way, what would have been an approvable application? In my mind, it would have been, yes, you want to separate from the front and the back, and you want to separate on the side, that's fine. Well, I want to extend the fence along the front, but I can't find something to match, we're going to take this fence in the back, match it up, paint it all one color. Well, I don't want people going through the landscape island, well, right now, it looks kind of tacky, you have this.
It looks terrible.
Tacky, but it's, you have these two different fence styles, that are different heights that match up, and then six feet later, you have it, you match up with a different fence type, it doesn't match up.
And how do we know that she even tried to find the same fence?
Well, to me, it would have been just, it would have been.
Consider it.
We would have come back and said, well, just use the sections from the back, you said, well, I want to connect them.
But we don't even know that she tried, did she tell you that she tried to find the fence?
I think they tried, because that's why they, they try to look like each other, but they don't. So I think that's, that's my suggestion to you.
I would like proof that that fence doesn't exist.
The two different fence styles aren't objectionable if they don't connect.
Exactly.
And if you suggest, they're going to, so here's, what's the expense? Well, they spent all this money to wrap around that landscape island, they spent this money trying to match the fences, and they just come in and said, well, hey, why don't you just take the fence sections off the back? Well, good idea.
They don't have, if I, they don't have the same type of fence in my yard, I'm not going to put up a different fence style, I'm going to replace the whole fence.
Well, that's what I'm trying to be, this, you're saying this matches, this isn't new.
But they're still going to have two different fence styles out there.
Correct, one on the drive aisle, one in the front.
Right.
But I think if they don't meet, and they're all painted black.
What kind of precedent are we setting for other properties? What kind of precedent will we be setting for other properties? If we allow them to have two different fence styles on the same property?
I think that is, is the angle, if you had two different fence styles along the front, that would look, the same shopping center, that would look odd, right now, it looks odd because it's two different colors.
I'm sorry, what was?
And it looks odd because you're trying to match two different fence types.
All right, so we go back to them, we tell them they need to fix it the correct way, the correct color, the same style.
And then they can come back.
And then they can come back, easy.
So that's what I'm saying, you have sixty days.
Boom.
You know, I'll go back, say, here's your remedy, and then they say, well, I, I tried it, and then they can come back at the next meeting, and I'm just making some assumptions as to why they want it all off.
Okay, but, uh, can you specifically ask them why they used a new fence style?
Well, let's not even, let's not even do that, let's just tell them, this is how it needs to be done, you need to remove this, you need to do this, and that can be approved, or approve it upon this basis that they do it the same color, the same style, X, Y, Z.
I, I think I understand what you're, excuse me, I don't understand what you're saying.
No, no.
What you're saying is, we would have had them use this fence style. If they couldn't match it, well, match the same fence with the same style, but continue to match this pattern to the rest of the parking lot, as you're. You wouldn't have done this four foot high fence, you wouldn't notice tomorrow.
They have any?
So it looks like this may have been an afterthought, when they realized, whoops, this is a different fence style on the front, and that's where they came up with this.
I'm thinking she just went to the people and didn't even notice, and just said, yeah, I'll take that one, because she thought in her mind, it was the same fence.
All right, so let's give Marshawn clear direction on what to say specifically to them, and then we'll table it, right?
Before that, um, is, is it the purview of the ARB to tell, you know, say where she can put the fence in, or she can't?
That's Marshawn's purview, as the zoning.
No, it's your purview.
It's our purview.
In order to just say it's four feet, can't block, can't, you know, on the, up to the property line, um, it can't block line of sight.
Does it when you pull by the parking lot, I didn't think about that.
You know, I checked that, but. So, I'm just trying to directly relate up with that, well, I guess that's the thing, do you wonder, I guess, is it the consensus to rip it all out, and start over?
I would say yes.
Or do you try to say, focus on matching the fence sections along the front, painting them all the same color, removing the.
What's the right thing to do, is to tell her to rip it out?
What, what do you want her to match, do we want her to match along the driveway? You want all the front to match what's on the driveway? Or do we want?
I want it all to match.
So, so the, the, so the, what's on the dri, along the driveway, we want it to match the front, right? So she would need to remove the front.
Either that, or remove the front and match the driveway.
Yeah. Right, that's what I'm saying, remove the front, match the driveway.
So we're allowing her to even keep the driveway?
Well, yeah, it's, as long as it matches, all matches, that's, right, that's the goal.
I'm with you.
Or tell me, tell me I'm wrong, I'm, I'm, I don't know.
So we think, so we're thinking to not let them keep the driveway, to take that all down.
To take the driveway down, and at least keep the front, and then, like Marshawn said, they could plant some shrubs.
Well.
No, he's just saying.
This is an after fact.
An after fact?
This is an after fact, uh, COA.
Okay.
But it's telling us what they want to do, they want to put a fence around this whole property, you're going to tell them, no, they can't?
They already did, they already did, though.
Oh, with the, around the entire property?
Well, what they did, we already know what they want to do, now the question is, do we want to say, no, you can't put that up, just for spite, because they put it up, or do we want to say, okay, we understand you want to put it up, but this doesn't follow our design processes, you've got three different designs. They can hand the fence up, I don't think we should say no, because I think wherever they want to put the fence is okay, at least I haven't seen any.
My thing, I, I wouldn't have told them they could not, the fact is, is that they did it.
Right.
They already did it.
Right.
So, we're basically now just saying, okay, we just want to make sure that it all matches, I, I completely understand that, and I would agree with that also, but they already did it, so now we're in a place where we have to decide what they can keep, and what they have to have changed?
Right, just like we would.
No, they can make the decision.
This COA is, they're saying, this is what we're proposing, even though it's already up, this is what we're proposing, now, we can say, no, we don't like what you're proposing, we need consistency with color, with design.
Okay.
And then they got to correct it.
Okay.
We're not just saying, because, uh, you got to take it all down and start over.
We're going to move forward as if.
We're going to move forward as if this doesn't exist.
And this is a proposal, and we're actually saying no to their proposal, we're saying it all needs to match.
Yeah, we're saying that, we need consistency with the fence.
And the signs.
Okay, then I can.
And now they can come back saying, well, how about if we keep it inconsistent, and kind of do the recommendations that Marshawn said? Now.
And we can move on, and see how that goes.
And then we can vote on that, and determine whether, uh, that's appropriate.
Okay.
Does that kind of give you an idea of where we're?
I'm sorry, what was the first recommendation?
They need to match in color, design, and height.
Okay.
And whatever they need to do to make sure it matches in color, design, and height.
Okay.
They can do to their ability. That means they can tear out the front, and replace it with, uh, what they've already put up on the sides, or vice versa. And then I, I like Marshawn's recommendation on that, what do you call it, that L portion there?
Landscape island.
That landscape island, to remove that, what's everyone's thoughts on that?
And shrub.
That's fine, and that's, and that's, you know, and that could be maybe a negotiating point for them to come back with.
And they need to get the signs approved, they're too big.
Yeah, are there, are there issues with the four foot high fence, as far as the?
It meets the guidelines.
Even the fence follows guidelines, it's just, the way it's put together, it doesn't follow consistencies of, uh, architectural, uh, design.
So the right way would have come in, I said, repeat myself again, the right way, I want to put up this, here's what I need to do, I need to separate these two lots, okay, match the same style fence, we probably would have recommended, no, don't swing it around the landscape island, put it in bushes if you don't want people to go in there, paint it all the same color, done. What I hear you saying now is go back to them and say, match the fence tight, match the color, do I say?
And the height.
And the height.
And the height.
And then, do I suggest that they remove the?
Yes, yes.
Landscape island as well?
Yes.
And let them come back and say what they want to do, if they want to come back and just say, well, I'll do a consistent fence along the front, and a consistent front fence internally, I guess that's something you'll have to consider, whether or not that's what you want to do.
And the size of the signs.
Correct, because the, I guess my suggestion of separating them out is, it's not as obvious, because you have one fence style and height on the front, and then the ones internal are matching but different, they're not, because they're far away, then optically, they don't look as odd.
But I'm thinking to myself, if they had. But I'm thinking to myself, if they had come originally, I would have said no, the fence styles need to match.
Gotcha, understood.
That's just me.
Style, color, figure of signs, okay?
So, uh, a question for you, then, Marshawn, uh, is this being submitted, or are you gonna take it back and say submitted next week? Or next...
No, I'm, I'm gonna suggest you table it, since I asked you to add it to your agenda, I'm gonna ask you to table it until, um...
You have a conversation with them.
Until April?
Mm-hmm.
Table it pretty...
That's sixty days, so...
Do you need a motion to table it?
Please.
Yes.
Is that, ax? Next month's ARB meeting, and I'll update you then, as to what her recommendation is.
Alright, I make a motion to table zoning permit ZP two zero one six dash zero zero four, until our next ARB regular meeting on April twentieth, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. I think we're done with discussion, but I will give you guys a last, last chance, okay? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, or abstains? Okay. I gotta put the table on here. When is it, you got the date in there?
April twenty.
Twentieth? I guess while I'm fooling around with this, we can go on to, uh, town council update.
Um, we really don't have anything, everybody's...
Oh, that's not true.
So bad, that is really not true, is it?
With everything you've done this week...
Marshawn, I saw Marshawn's eyes roll, roll back.
With everything you've done this week, we...
I'm so tired. Okay, Monday morning, we had the groundbreaking for Chick-fil-A. Um, they'll actually start moving dirt next Monday, because our friends at Dominion Virginia Power had, um, an easement holdup on them. But it's now been released, and they're gonna start construction. Eighty days, is their constr...
Eighteen weeks.
Eighteen weeks is their construction timeframe, and they hope to open August first. That's their date that they're shooting for. Um, Harover property, Harover Park. Mr. Landry, who owns QBE, has decided that he would like to throw his hat in the ring for removing the police department for the old house up there. And he wants to move it to the QBE property, and open a shop in it, on his property. It would sit where the old school trailers are. So, they're supposed to come up with a plan on how to move it. There's also another offer from a man in...
Middleburg.
Middleburg. Um, who will dismantle the house, and put it back together in Middleburg. So, we're waiting to, for them to get their final offers then, and then we'll make a decision on that.
That's great. It'd be pretty cool to keep it in town.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Perhaps you should come to the meeting, then.
When's the meeting?
I'll let you know.
Because I would say that...
I was in the minority when that topic was brought up, I'm just saying. Am I right?
Minority for...
For wanting it to stay in town.
Would you benefit from it?
No, I think it would be a benefit, but wasn't I in the minority on the council for keeping it in town? Be so politically correct.
He is.
But did you go to closed sessions talking about it?
Oh, maybe we did. Maybe we did. But it's, it's, it's open record now.
It would be closed session.
No, we went to closed sessions talking about it.
But now it's common knowledge, so, we're working on that, but I think it would be great. He would take off all the additions, move it over there, refurbish it.
Which actually fits into, um, his, uh, whatever corporate plan of that area, since he is gonna keep that one area parkland. This is kinda like, uh, with most parklands, you know how you have your little concession stand?
Mm-hmm.
Fits right into what he's looking for, and...
That's what your ARB recommendations were.
Exactly, exactly.
Hmm.
I will just say, I was in the minority, so, you all would, I would like to invite you to come and express your opinion at the next council meeting, I will let you know when it is. 'Cause it might happen before April.
Okay.
Text me.
I'll text you.
Thank you.
Connor's not a good emailer, he's a young kid, he just texts them.
Different generations, right?
Uh, is that it? Did I get everything? We've just been, SCC, I know. I testified at the SCC on Monday, waited three hours to testify. Um, it's a very enlightening process, going and listening to all these people talk about the power lines, and all that kinda stuff. Um, I don't really get a feel for how it's gonna go. I thought the gentleman who was taking the testimony was very open to listening and asking questions, and whether what happens when they go and actually discuss it, no clue. There were people there from Dominion, um, but I think twenty-one people signed up to speak at four-thirty. And then the SCC broke at dinner, for dinner, for thirty minutes, and those people didn't wanna wait. So twenty-one of them didn't get to speak, they just left, that had already signed up. So, that was a little disheartening, but hopefully they'll mail in their comments. Um, and it'd be nice if the man from Journey Through Hallowed Ground comes on the May second one to speak, so, we'll see.
Would be helpful if more ARB members could go and speak. Um, I have read through the documentation that afternoon, and what was frustrating was, they do a very poor job of accounting for the corporate boundary of the town. They don't show it on any of the maps, they generally reference that we have a historic district, but their whole historic district, or historic inventory is very dismissive of the town's structures.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, they don't, they don't qualify for the National Register, they've been, uh, they're surrounded by modern development, they've lost some of their provenance and context. You know, they don't, they forget the fact that we have these power poles already through town, and now we're gonna have to impact some. And very dismissive of the policies we have regarding our historic district, the fact that we have a sitting ARB board, and just seem to discount, that anything in town had of any historic value or condition. So I thought that was pretty, pretty egregious on, on Dominion's part, so...
Now, on public meetings, are you familiar enough to know that if, uh, someone comes to speak and brings artifacts to submit, are they required to accept them?
Yes, they have to, you testify, you're, it's like you're at a hearing, you swear you're in.
They swear you in when you go.
And you're allowed to provide documentation as part of it, you can also email your comments, and I think there's some other mail in your comments as well, and you can go back, so I forgot some things.
Marshawn's like, I forgot to say this.
So I'm gonna go back in May and make some other comment.
So, yeah, if we go back, maybe we need to bring our, uh, historic overlay and all this stuff, and say, you are in the middle of our corporate boundaries. You are disturbing our historic overlay, you are, and actually just state that out with artifacts to them, so it does get recorded.
So, and then they, they didn't, they didn't reference any of the in-town neighborhoods?
Nothing, it's like Haymarket doesn't exist.
Yeah, they referenced all the developments in around it.
Way.
So, yeah, it was a little frustrating.
It was that Marshawn wasn't there for the earlier session, but it was very interesting to listen to some of the people speak, and how they came to the... Were you there when the man from Europe, the European man that had immigrated here came, spoke? It was really very interesting, how he spoke, how he immigrated here from Europe, and in Europe, where he was, you couldn't own any property, and it's a big thing, it was a big thing to him. If, um, he bought a piece of property that has like three or four acres, and it had all these trees, it was, his property would be affected if it came down, um...
Fifteen?
Yeah. Uh, it was just very interesting to listen to people's views on things, and what's important, and nobody spoke in favor of it, I will just tell you that, so... Yes, but if everybody could come, and that would be a good idea, Ken, as the chairman, you could say, here's our...
Yeah, I'll have to make note of it, 'cause I totally forgot about the fourteenth meeting.
I think it's an impressive point that they haven't, they've never come and engaged you, they've come and engaged the council.
Mm-hmm.
But they put together this whole analysis for our historic district, but now they're bothered to...
Discuss it with us.
Discuss it with us, that's what I thought was frustrating.
Never reach out to us.
ARBs, policies, issues, it just, but it, it seems to suggest otherwise in the report, but anyway, so, yeah, so it'd be helpful to have us out there. I think it'd be strong to have the chairman or an ARB member say, I feel that your information is incomplete.
Whether you do it by email, or mail, or actually go speak. Your turn, Connor.
Excellent. Um, Mr. Coffee from the Berkeley group...
I'm sorry, is it his turn? He comes after me.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm running this meeting here. Okay, go ahead, Connor. Alright.
I wear the pants and the pants on. Only here, right?
Not at all.
Uh, Mr. Coffee from the Berkeley group came and spoke with us in regards to our sign ordinance, and reviewing it, making some recommendations on it, so the planning...
It's like zoning ordinance, yeah.
Zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance, um, so, um, he gave us some homework to look over the changes that he and his, uh, group recommended. And, uh, we'll be meeting back with him at our next planning commission meeting to look at those, um, some of the wordage in there, some of the definitions, and we're really touching on definitions of things, uh, more than anything else. Um, site ordinance, um, even though we just passed it, it is now back in the hands of our attorney, due to some things that came down from, um, recent court hearings. So, Mr. Martin is making some changes as the court hearings come in, and making those changes, then, um, we will look at it. Then we'll have, um, a, um, public hearing on the PC side and on the town side, uh, most likely a joint hearing to get it going through. Um, Guy Gravitt, uh, Mr. Gravitt, has submitted a site plan for the fairgrounds, um, there's twenty-three, I think it's about twenty-three acres over there. Um, then, let's see, Sheets has not submitted their final site plan yet, and Payne Lane, um, there's word of some buyers coming in there, there's word of some buyers not coming in. But it's up and down, up and down, um, through that. Is that over the, uh, property slated to be, um, medical building? I, I know, uh, where the pink house used to be, the owner came in, when they were talking about dropping it, said, yeah, we're gonna make this all a, uh, uh, medical facility to, uh, you know, I guess, annex off what's happening with the hospital, I'm assuming that whole area is gonna be like medical...
You mean right across the street here?
Are you talking about Payne Lane, or are you talking about the fairgrounds?
You're back there, that's Jordan Lane.
I'm on Jordan. Sorry, guys. Payne Lane, I should know that, that's right in...
Part of your house.
On that property, we have, we have done some phone calls on that property, we haven't... The county side wants to do medical office, the town side, they haven't made a decision what they wanna do, the parcel crosses the town boundary. I'll augment his little, um, the second phase of the ice rinks kicked off.
Oh, yeah.
You have a chance, go back there and take a look. Um, two lots fifty-one and fifty-two of the Phase Two of Villages at Haymarket, on Blight and Washington Street, those should be pouring foundations this week, if not next week. So, interestingly enough, I, I, they submitted their zoning permit, we checked it against the plans, and their first one had some elements missing. So, when I called them on it, they blatantly said, thank you for bringing that up, and then went and got fixed it, so...
Oh, sorry, I just missed that.
Um, and then the council's also looking at a more robust Blight ordinance, which puts a little more teeth in the council's ability to...
To demolish buildings.
Yeah, well, the one facing Payne Lane definitely needs to be dropped, I mean, it's looking like it's becoming a...
The house with the roof gone.
Yeah, it's becoming a hazard.
So, you know, I, I've said to Connor several times, we've been reluctant, I've been reluctant, seemed easier to work with them to try to come up with a development plan, but the longer it takes, and I don't think the owner is motivated, he was motivated to put on the market. But I think if, if we take this step, it'll, it'll give him some indication where we intend to go. With stuff like demolishing buildings, uh, health, safety, welfare issues, putting mechanics lanes, you know, making other encumbrances, so...
Yes. Oh, did you say what's going in up at the fairgrounds?
Um, I have not reviewed the site plan, I know that, um, he has walked in a grocery retailer, L-I-D-L.
Lidl.
Lidl.
L-I-D-L, um, kind of a mix between like...
It's a European.
A Trader Joe's and a Harris Teeter, per se, if I believe, I'm speaking correctly.
It's Aldi, right?
I was about to say, it's Aldi.
It's like an Aldi.
So, he's correct, so I went, met with the gentleman, and I said, we portray this as a Trader Joe's and an Aldi, he said, no, we're more of a Trader Joe's and a Harris Teeter.
'Cause on their website, it says Aldi.
Well, I think there's, they're, yeah, it goes, they're brothers, I guess the guy that owns Aldi, that owns Legal, and...
Oh.
Or the family, or the brothers, or their Trader Joe's, it seems very insatiable, I'm sorry. So, but it's a more upscale, um, store, and their, their niche seems to be wine and, um, baked goods, the gentleman told me. You will have to see that architecture, it's, John and I, we talked about this last time, it's a very modern sort of architecture, so that'll be an interesting discussion. They also wanna do a hundred-and-fifty-room hotel behind, or CVS, that commercial, it'll be seventy-five feet high, so...
But it'd be backed up towards sixty-six.
Yeah, which I think is good, we wanna buy the interchange there.
Excellent.
Um, and then they'll have some commercial along Washington Street.
Does the town have a hotel tax?
The council did approve, in anticipation of something, the property did approve a hotel tax.
Excellent.
So, but the ordinance doesn't allow it right now, so, one of the ordinance amendments will be to allow hotel use, so...
What are y'all's thoughts on that?
I was just smiling, because I know...
It depends how big it is.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it depends on how big it is, but I mean...
Like, three stories, three stories?
Oh. Um, yeah, it'll be, hopefully we'll get a good flag.
Yeah.
I mean, a good hotel, there's...
Not super A.
Hotels, hotels.
I withdraw that comment.
So, and then, we did have a conversation last night, and we had the, VRE is looking at extending their rail stations, and so, we met with them and talked about...
I moved, and then they do it?
And so... Planning, it'll take a good ten years before it ever comes out.
I was just about to say, no more four a.m. wake-up calls to drop my husband off at his carpool.
So, we met with the planning group, and, and they wanted us, they walked through some potential sites within the town, and also some tight sites west of town. So we talked about some of the pros and cons of each of those, but they're, they're putting together, uh, presentation, there's, they have like five or six different working groups, so through the month of April, they'll be doing that. Which, which was always a good idea, is they're reaching out to the property owners before they show a map that shows stations on their property, so...
Yeah.
It's one of the my property?
What's that?
I said it's one of the my property, okay.
No, they're looking more of the industrial areas behind the ice rink, and behind the shopping center.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The, the difficult part for them, I'm assuming, is probably parking, which means it's gotta be a three-story facility.
Parking and access.
Yeah.
Traffic, how to get in and out.
Exactly.
So they're gonna have a park and ride, kind of a...
Yeah, they, yeah, they've come up with several, they have service parking stations, they have parks, stations like Manassas, they have kiss and ride stations, and so, just be a matter of what.
Yeah, and since this will be the, uh, tail end of the line, it's gonna be the heaviestly parked.
Yeah.
So one of the things we talked about is maybe doing, one of the offers was doing a hybrid, maybe doing a kiss and ride in town, and then making the larger end of, end of rail facility on the county side. Um, that way, if we wanna walk, ride, bike to the station here, we could do that, and then people that are coming from the west, or other points, north and south, they can go park at that facility, and not overwhelm the town, so... It's in the concept, I think it'll be interesting.
So, yeah, if that was the case, and this would be the second to last stop, and that would be the...
Correct. I mean, we've, we've sort, we've sort of lost some of our agrarian and railroad routes, so it'll be nice to...
Bring them back.
Bring that back, and then, most of you seen the caboose across the street?
Mm-hmm.
That project's finally underway, so...
Yay.
Nice one, though.
Well, I'm sure we had to hurry up, 'cause our money was, um, coming to its tail end, right?
Yes, there was a window, that was fast closing, we couldn't get bids on it for a while, so...
Hopefully, we, uh, we did keep with, uh, putting in historic signs on the decking and all that stuff. I can't wait to, did Jen still do it, or were you part of it, Denise? Did we keep the signs?
Um, as far as I know, the signs are still on, yeah.
Sweet.
What were the signs?
Kinda like, you know, the, uh, the historic... Kinda like, you know, the, uh, the historic markers on the road, something similar to that, uh, a- along the, uh, railing as you're going up, which kind of, uh, piece by piece explains some of the history behind, uh, the rails and everything else that happens there. Now, I don't know who was doing the research for that. You probably got stuff with that, right, Denise? Okay. You done?
Connor, sorry.
Okay. Um, any questions? No? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, I guess new business. I don't have any new business to put on on the table. How about you, Marshawn? Do you have anything? Okay. And for old business, uh, moving on, old business, we got the, uh, task list. The only thing that's really on the task list that could become active is the, uh, the sign, uh, item. And of course, that's been on hold for the, uh, uh, working session we had today. I guess we'll try to move forward with that, um. I wish we had, uh, a full house for his presentation, but-
That's pretty good.
Very good.
Yeah, uh, but it, it did give us some angles that we do need to approach, which is, uh, do we wanna try to incorporate some type of partnership? Uh, branding on that, uh, on fifteen? And make that as a, uh, uh-
I'll bring it up as far as, um, cause we're running the budget for next year.
Okay.
We're doing that for council, so we'll see if we can-
Yeah, and also, even though it's, I wouldn't consider it part of the ARB, but what came out of, uh, that meeting also is maybe, uh, you presenting, um, the tree tagging and getting some trees put in around, uh, our area.
Yep.
Uh, that was pretty neat.
Are we gonna wait back for them to show us, um, new si- new signs with, uh, a collaboration of our symbol and what they want to be placed up? I thought you asked him about that, if they had something that was a-
Yes, I, what I wanted to find out is, they had some type of, uh, branding insignia that, uh, they want incorporated into a partnership type of sign. So, what, what it would be is, we would end up designing our sign the way we'd want to, and if we wanted to include, say, that we're in partnership with, we have at least some type of, uh, branding that they wanna give us to put into it, and it would be an approvable. So they don't have any partnership brandings at this point.
Okay.
Or, or icons, or something that we can stamp in with our signage.
Okay, okay.
I don't know if that makes sense for you guys, since you're, uh, kinda going blind, since you didn't have a chance to look over the packet or, or see the presentation. So, yeah, next meeting, um, I'll try to align some ideas and maybe, uh, I guess work with you, Denise, on if, uh, he does take anything back. Now, um, cause, and you, uh, did get his card. Did, did he promise anything back to you?
No, but we can ask him. I can ask him. We copy you in.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, that's all for old business. Anybody have anything they wanna bring up before we look about closing this? Well, the next item would be adjourned. Anybody, uh, wanna move?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we call this meeting adjourned at eight twenty.